Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council. The date is August 26 at 7:00 PM. Will our city recorder please call roll?
Councillor Gustafson?
Here.
Councillor President Rippe?
Here.
Councillor Martinez?
Here.
Councillor Marshall?
Here.
Councillor Valenzuela?
Here.
Councillor Ewing?
Absent.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Thank you. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tualatin Kalapuas, who call themselves Apaladi. They are now part of the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and council please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item B on the agenda. Public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand feature to be called on. Okay, we're going to start with public comments. And I have Erica, is it DeBois? Thanks. We're like, yeah, can you come up to the front? I'm sorry. We were discussing how to pronounce your last name and DeBois.
On behalf of the Forest Grove Swim Club, I would like to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak with the city. The Forest Grove Swim Club has been a contributing member providing quality competitive swimming to the Forest Grove community since 1969. COVID drastically impacted our swim club by reducing our membership and ability to conduct a successful organization. We have been successful at rebuilding our team to our current membership of 50 swimmers. Our swimmers and families are active volunteers in this community. Our members volunteer at the annual Rotary Steak Dinner, host water stations at the annual Hag Lake Triathlon, support the Forest Grove Senior and Community Center at the downtown Trick or Treat event, volunteer at a Framers Touch at Christmas time, provide resources to the food insecure in our community through canned food drives at our meets, host community activities such as our family-friendly Second Annual Dragon Dash and mini triathlon, and start our own high school teams in Banks when they don't exist. We enjoyed a supportive and collaborative relationship with the city of Forest Grove as well as the Parks and Recreation Department that was inclusive and helped us thrive. This relationship has changed in the following ways. We have been removed from the city's website and the Aquatic Center's lobby display with no notice or explanation. We have reached out on several occasions for an explanation and clarification to the apparent new policy with minimal or no response from the Parks and Recreation Department. The competitive swim groups, including Pacific University, the Forest Grove High School Swim and Water Polo Teams, and the Forest Grove Swim Club were not approached nor allowed to offer input on the placement of how the slides at the Aquatic Center may impact our programs. As a consequence, we have had to re-sanction all of our meets on a tight timeline. Additionally, the scoreboard is no longer visible and requires being addressed, which has been quoted at over $10,000. Within the past month, there have been rumors about a three-month pool closure from March to May of 2025 for drain upgrades. The Aquatic Center and the Parks and Recreation Department have not approached our club about the accuracy of this rumor or how this may impact our swimmers, leaving them without a pool just prior to the long course state championships. We miss being included in our community. We host four home meets that bring over 350 swimmers and their families to our community. Our members contribute over $20,000 a year to the Aquatic Center. We would like to be included once again and to have consideration in the decisions that are made at the Aquatic Center when they directly impact our swimmer. We thank you for hearing our concerns and for allowing us to advocate for the success of our young adults in this community.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Easton DeBois. And Sophia? Sophia, how do I say your last name? Mazurkowitz. I like it.
Hello, my name is Easton DeBois. I've been swimming for five years now, and I am top three in the state of Oregon. I went to swim in college. There are some concerns about the slide I have. A flip, oh, wait.
My name is Sophia Mazurkowitz. I've been swimming for almost a decade, and around this time of the year, I spend almost like six hours at the pool doing swimming and water polo.
Some concerns I have about the slide is the flip, is when I'm flip turning for a race, it creates an op, the slide creates an obstacle that makes me slower in a race. This is only a disadvantage for lane one and lane two because there's only one slide that covers a half, one half of the pool. The slide also blocks the scoreboard, which means I cannot see my placement or result. I, this is affecting me because I cannot see if I have qualified for a time for championship, and it affects my swimming career.
When splitting the lane, sometimes when two swimmers have to share lane, they have to split it, and one person may have to move over to avoid kicking the slide, and that could cause two swimmers to bump into each other while trying to get through a practice. Pool deck visibility is also a big thing, as the slide covers up a big chunk of an area that may cause lifeguards to have to try to maneuver around the slide to see kids behind it. And overall, there are two other slides at the pool, so the big slide takes away from the competitive swimming area while the two other slides add for children to be able to play on them, so the big slide doesn't add anything to the pool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tabor Water Street.
All right. I'm Tabor Water Street, and I'm here to kind of defend the pool as well a little bit. I speak a lot from the heart here, but I think I may have one of the longest-running connections with the swim pool, as my dad ran it many years ago, and I kind of grew up at the pool and, or not kind of, I did. And the many things that I see at the swim pool in the last couple of years have really changed a lot. It's moved a lot from a very family-oriented place, and there's been a lot of changing as far as mic keys and the way that people come in and move around, or just with the employees and things that have gone on. It doesn't always have that great hometown feel that it used to have, and that's one thing that I think that we're trying to get back to with the communication, as far as being communicated from with the Parks and Rec and having the communication with all of the people that are involved at the swim pool, from the coaches to the supervisors, headguards, a lot of that stuff. And the slide is kind of that main thing right now. The slide's more often seen put in, as we all know, and there wasn't much input asked about the coaches, us that spend our time there, and with supervisors and lead guards as far as, so it makes the competition part of things really hard. I also, I'm the head coach of the swim team, the high school swim team and water polo. I'm also assistant coach at Pacific, and speaking with, or the assistant coach, so you got the head coach at Pacific, she's very concerned about the slide too and having it block the scoreboard. And even competitively, in water polo practices, we've already had the slide be in the way of us passing the ball. I've had swim lesson kids, I teach swim lessons there too. I've already had kids hit their head on the slide, hit their hands on the slide, and trying to do flip turns, hit their feet on the slide. So that posed an obvious safety concern that we should definitely address, and with the slide and the shallow end, we've had the same idea, and I know one of the kids just said that the, for lifeguarding and watching the pool, it very, very blocks a lot of view, and I've seen the lifeguards have to move a lot more than necessary to make sure they see all the kids in the pool, and that, that can be a very big safety issue. So just kind of coming from that quick, I guess my two minutes is up, but it'd be really nice just to see the communication overall of what we're trying to do here and making sure that the people that are there all the time, such as us coaches and stuff on that matter, are just involved with it, so we can make great decisions.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Feek.
Hello, Mayor Wenzel. Nice to see you. The city manager and Mariah are passing out things I want you to have. Mayor Wenzel, President Timothy Rippe, and councillors. I'm Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966 and former chair of the City Sustainability League Commission in Forest Grove. I emailed you, and there's an attachment that I really want you to read, but this is kind of a summary of the first page that you got. You can read along with me, or you can just listen to me. Working through the differences of opinions, asking nonpartisan elected officials to get the best services and programs for the constituents that elected you, whether county or city, is admirable. Thank you, Mayor Wenzel, for attending the State of the County address delivered by Chair Harrington, learning from a dedicated change agent leader like Catherine Harrington, challenging some of the assumptions but realizing that the county has managed well its resources and the resources gained from other agencies to address homelessness. The department is dedicated to this task systematically, works very hard to address the problem. And then I thank Chair Harrington, you can read that, she's done a great job of leading the counties since she was elected. And then I talk about the county commissioners, and I say, I know not only written, I make not only written, oral comments that want to question county business meetings, but also attend the work sessions and the Clean Water Services teaching learnings as their board of commissioners for Clean Water Services, so I can learn, speak with some knowledge of how the county works. So in the spirit of being willing to interact with information, maybe not of your political perspective, yours too, please read the attachment titled Heather Cox Richardson, August 26 Newsletter. It's attached to the email I sent to you. You'll have to read it that way. We're in a fight to keep our democracy in the November election. At the bottom of that, I say, and I quote Robert Hutchins, "Justice and freedom, discussion and criticism, intelligence and character, these are the indispensable ingredients of the democratic state. We can be rich, powerful without them, but not for long." So please read the attachment that I have given to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. There is no one else signed up, but in case you came in late and you would like to give public comment, is there anyone in the crowd? Yes, you can come up, just state your name for the record, please. Oh, wait, for you to come up, if you don't.
Got some mobility issues. And we take, we take the microphone to her, please.
Thank you.
I have this written out so I could turn it in, turn in a written copy. All I'm asking is some questions. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
My name is Arlene Sickink.
Thank you.
And my questions are, do we have a person or committee who checks the local election process? Can you hear me?
Yes.
For being legally correct before we send it to our election, election, before we send in our election results? Do you know this?
Well, so the election results are certified through Washington County Election Division? So yes, the answer would be yes, there is a process.
I'm sorry, I don't understand you.
The elections are certified through Washington County Elections? So yes.
Who?
Washington County. So Washington County.
Not a person?
Well, there's a person there who does it.
You don't know who it is, do you?
No.
Who can I find this out from, I wonder?
Washington County, oh, Mr. Willie's raising his, Commissioner Willie's raising his hand. Yeah, that's fine.
Washington County manages the election process.
Okay.
We are very committed to following all of the state rules and making sure that it is a safe and secure election and that everyone complies with the rules, so.
So it's not a person, it's just the county?
Well, there's a.
Some vague thing called the county.
It's a county division that we manage, that is correct.
Okay, is this the same person or committee who certifies the vote then?
Yes.
Is this person at the county, city, or town level?
At the county level.
Nothing lower?
Nothing lower.
Nothing higher?
Nothing higher.
Is that determined by Oregon law, or is it federal, is it federal level?
Oregon Secretary of State manages the elections and gives us the rules and the guidelines, and we comply with them in the elections division.
That's a little vague, I'm afraid. Okay, so what will happen if the person who's supposed to be certifying the election decides not to certify it?
That's not allowable. We have to certify the election result.
Okay, it's not, okay. I'll turn this question in. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to give public comment? No, yeah, no. Okay. So anyone on Zoom who would like to give public comment?
Oh, okay. May I, just very quickly?
Yeah.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the youth that came to give public testimony today. It's so important that you set up that example for others who are here as well, for all the young people. We like to hear from you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item C, which is the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The consent agenda was moved by Council President Rippe and seconded by Councillor Gustafson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same signal. Hearing none. The consent agenda is approved with a vote of six to zero. Item D, additions or deletions. City manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
I do not, thank you, mayor.
Any proposed by council? Hearing none, we're going to move on to item E. Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for waiting and being patient. We will have a 10-minute presentation from Councillor Willie with five minutes for questions. Is that fine? 10 and five?
That's fine.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to try to get us back on time.
Thank you very much, mayor, and city councillors, for allowing me some time to communicate a little bit of what the county is dealing with and some of the focus and the attention that we give. I wanted just to follow up on the election process, that was not part of my spiel, but I want to assure everyone, everyone here, that our elections divisions is very committed to having a very honest and accurate elections result. We know that this November is going to be a big one, and we are devoting a significant amount of time and energy to make sure that we are in compliance with the Secretary of State and that the election results will be accurate. And certainly, if you have any questions that you'd like to have answered, please contact me or the, and I will direct you to our elections office and make sure that you feel comfortable with our elections results. So as an overview, I gave this presentation today at noon at the Forest Grove Cornelia Chamber Luncheon, so for the three of you that were there, I'm sorry, this is going to be redundant. The other two that were not there, well, you get to hear something new. So Washington County, as you all know, is a county of about 600,000 folks, and that it is divided into four districts, and this is District Four, and I am the county commissioner. That is elected by District Four. It basically stretches from Cornelius Pass everything west, it touches other, four other counties, that would be Yamhill, Tillamook, Clatsop, and Columbia Counties. So I deal with those counties and their county commissions on a number of particular issues. One of them is the Northwest Act, which is a, which is a group that focuses on transportation issues in our district. That is Western Washington County and the other three counties, that would be Tillamook, Clatsop, and Columbia. One of the things that is at the top of our discussion right now is Highway Six. We have had a number of issues and traffic fatalities on Highway Six, so safety is a significant issue, but primarily, as you all know, the city of Banks is in the process of expanding both west and east of their city. The golf course would be the one that probably was most recognizable, and the intersection coming out of the golf course is Eritz Road and Highway Six. The ODOT has control of that in the development and the expansion of that, and they are looking at a roundabout, which is going to be a very interesting, you can imagine, putting a roundabout on a highway where there's probably speeds of 55 to 65 miles an hour coming into that. So there's a considerable amount of concern. We have asked that they, we being Northwest Act, has asked them, ODOT, to make sure that they have lots of community engagement and have conversation about that, not only with the citizens of Banks, but of the agriculture community and of the trucking industry that comes out of Tillamook. That is a very important corridor for our transportation, and, and a roundabout would be a challenge. So we will wait and see. ODOT has the final responsibility of making that decision. We've asked that they make sure that they have plenty of community engagement in that. As you all know, we also have Metro Pass, a shelter housing for our homeless community. Several years ago, we are continuing to invest a significant amount of money into housing and providing services for our homeless community, and that will continue. You may see that upcoming in the next May election, Metro may put an initiative on there to allocate some of that money to affordable housing, whereas right now it's specifically designated 100% for, for housing for our homeless community, and that Metro would like to allocate some of that for affordable housing. We all, we being all the three counties, agree that we need affordable housing money. Washington County has invested all of the money that was allocated to them several years ago, and it is important that we have that. We're just not sure this is the right venue to do that. So stay tuned for that, there'll be lots of more communication. Upcoming in '25, in November of '25, will be two renewal levies. One is libraries. We all love libraries. They're very important, community gathering places, and certainly the Forest Grove Library is one of them that is in the WCCLS, that's the Washington County Community Library System. And so it's going to be very important that we continue to fund our libraries as well as our public safety, which is our ESPD, our extended sheriff's patrol, as well as our unincorporated areas. And so that, you will hear more information about that as we move into 2025. Some fun stuff for me is, you've heard about the Council Creek Trail. We continue to work on that. Right now, it is, we are working with Trimat and ODOT as to the ownership, and Councillor Rippe asked me this question today, who's going to own the right of way? It's going to be Trimat, because Trimat's focus is they want to have that opportunity that sometime in the next 20 or 30 years, they may want to extend light rail from Hillsborough to Forest Grove. That would be the pathway that they would be able to do that. In the interim, we're going to build a trail. The trail has been fully funded, we're in the design process of it. There are a number of still considerable issues, and, and we're working through all of that. This trail is scheduled to open sometime, hopefully early in 2028, so we've still got some work to do on that. And we have, as you know, the rails and the, and the, and the beams that support the rails have all been removed and smoothed out, so it looks like it's an attractive place to go. Unfortunately, we can't open that as a trail until we officially do all of our safety guidelines and the design of that trail. In conjunction with that is the Salmonberry Trail, which is a 82-mile trail. It's a rail, the trail, the rail. Again, that is a railway that we have, have access to, to pull the rails out of it, and we have done that from Banks to Stubbs Stewart, and we are working on how we can develop that as well. It'll be parallel with the Banks-Fernonia Trail, but at Stubbs Stewart, it will head west, go over the coast mountains, and end up in Tillamook. It's 82 miles, it's going to be a phenomenal trail. I will not ever see that trail open because it's going to take a very, very long time and a lot of money, but we're focused on the first seven miles of that, Banks to Stubbs Stewart, and hopefully we can get that done in the next couple of years. It costs about $1 million a mile, so we've got some heavy lifting to do to work with Washington County, certainly on the permitting side of things, and raising that kind of money. Probably the most important aspect that I've been working on over the last nine months is the timber. Washington County, District Four, has about 60,000 acres of trees, and so several years ago, probably 30 or 40 years ago, 15 counties gave the state the authority to manage the timber in those 15 counties. They're called the trustland counties. And so I am working with a group of other commissioners because the state had to pass a habitat conservation plan that was federally mandated. That habitat conservation plan is going to be very restrictive, and so the money that is being received specifically in the Forest Grove District, which is basically all of the Western Washington County, is going to be significantly reduced because we're not going to be able to harvest as much timber. What impact does that have? 68% of the money that Washington County receives from timber goes to school districts. Forest Grove School District is certainly one of them. They receive annually about $743,000 of money from the timber sales that goes to support them. What happens if that's reduced? Then the school districts will have to go to the state school fund and request a back bill of that money, so there isn't any downside, any haircut loss there. We are concerned, we being the trustland counties, are concerned that there's going to be an issue with that. Of the 15 counties, that impact to the state school fund is about $25 million. So the state will have to enhance the state school fund by $25 million to make everyone whole. And again, that's all 15 counties, but the important thing is that there are a number of schools in Washington County that are going to be impacted. That would be Gaston, Banks, Forest Grove, Fernonia, Hillsborough School Districts, as well as all the other school districts to a minor step with the timber money. So this is going to be impacting all of our schools in Western County, as well as Tillamook and Clatsop are the two largest timber harvest counties in the state. They are going to be significantly impacted as well. So we are working on that. Some of the other money is the Washington County Rural Fire District, number two, receives about $233,000, and the Forest Grove Rural Fire District receives about $122,000. These are organizations. These are organizations that have a fairly small budget. So this is not a small amount of money and will be impactful to them because they don't have a state school fund to backfill. So we are working with the governor's office, and we will be working with legislature to make sure that we have some funds to make sure these organizations are not harmed by this habitat conservation plan. We all believe that we need one. It's a it's a it's a great plan from the standpoint of protecting our forests, our streams, our fish and wildlife, but there has to be balance. And that's what we're trying to convince the Board of Forestry and the Department of Forestry to take into consideration. One of the things that we're shifting gears to mental health. As you know, we had Measure 118, maybe I got that wrong, that impacted our ability to arrest and help people with drug addiction.
Oh, Measure 110.
110.
110, yes, thank you, sorry.
Okay, I was trying to.
And so legislature modified that in the last session. We will have a new program that comes out. I don't have the information on that, but that will be coming out and starting September 1st. But the thing that we have been working on at the county for several years is the CAT Program, which is the Center for Addiction, Trial, and Treatment. It's two locations, one in Hillsborough and one on the edge of Beaverton, where we will be able to when these, when our public safety folks, I won't say arrest them because we're not arresting them, but pick them up. And they need to be detoxed. They need to be have an overnight or more stay. Then we will, we are providing a place for them to do that. And so we are very excited about that. And the funding for that is both at federal and state level. That should come online sometime in '27. So we're very excited about that. We will have the only, Washington County will have the only facilities that do that currently. The city of Portland, Montloma County, is working on their program as well. So we'll wait and see how all of that works. So other than that, I've tried to abbreviate this as much as possible. I know that you might have some questions about that. I just want to let you know that you can always reach out to me, and I will get you the information of whatever's.
Any questions for the Commissioner, Council President Rippey?
Thank you, Commissioner Willie. Appreciate your taking the time and coming and update us on what the county is doing. I have two questions. The first you already know of because I said I was going to ask you this question, and that's with regard to the maintenance of the Council Creek Trail. Understand that still hasn't been resolved. And do you do you have any idea how that is going to look? Who's going to who's going to have responsibility for the maintenance of the trail?
We are, right now, we are working, Counselor, on an agreement. The four parties are Forest Grove, Cornelius, Hillsborough, and Washington County because we all own a part of the Council Creek Trail, the six miles. We're working on an agreement that would identify how that trail is going to be maintained and who's responsible for what portions of it. It's going to be very important because safety is always an issue in our trails. And also just the attractiveness to those who love to walk on the trail. So that's what we're continuing to work on. We don't have an agreement yet, but that is forthcoming. It will be, just to be clear, Counselor, the it will be those four organizations or entities that will be responsible for the maintenance.
Thank you. I hope nobody has the option of opting out of taking responsibility. So the second question I have, and this kind of is related to transportation. And and I understand that the county has has been working very diligently in trying to resolve their budgetary issues. And there's always more demand for resources or revenue than there is, or yeah, than there is revenue to spread around. But similar to your request of the state to honor the original agreement with regard to the forest trust management, I would like the county to honor its the original formula that was agreed to with regard to MSTIP allocation funds. Understand that the county is looking at those funds and trying to reallocate them differently than what was agreed to by the cities to begin with. And and you know, as be having been a mayor of Hillsborough, how much the cities rely on those funds. And it's been an extremely, extremely successful program. Honestly, a really successful program. It's a model that other states and cities have used. So I would implore and encourage you to honor that original formula so that we can continue to improve the transportation infrastructure we have in the county. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'll just respond to that by the conversations that we're having about the allocations of MSTIP funds and the collection of that. It is very important that we maintain that program. I completely agree with you. There is there is conversation about what does that look like? It's about $50 million a year is what we collect that we have allocated. We've worked very well with the other cities and the mayors to identify projects. That's been very successful as well. We continue to honor that responsibility. The part of the problem is that if we if we continue the the 3% increase every year that we're allowed because of property taxes, we can easily manage that. It's the part that goes above that that we're identifying as there's possible ways that we can reallocate some of that money to help the county out with providing their services. This past year, I believe we reduced the MSTIP money by about $2.5 million. That $2.5 million probably kept services at the county level for 15 positions and supporting other departments, whereas $2.5 million in a transportation fund really does a very minimal part. We're still committed to the 3% raise every year because that's what it is. But it usually goes above that 3%. That's the part we're looking at. So trust me, the commissioners are very focused on being fair, and that's a great program. We don't want to do anything that would diminish that program, but we do have to be a balanced county budget. So that's what we're looking at. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Martinez?
Probably a ridiculous question here, but I I know. Oh, thank you for coming tonight, too, Commissioner. You know, you talked about the Salmonberry Trail, and that costs a million dollars a month for them to construct it. And then we have all these other needs with schools and and mental health. It seems like such kind of a silly thing to be spending all that money on the trail when we have all these other things. And it really, it really should be a reallocation done on it. But of course, you know, government.
Well, trust me, that money is not coming from government sources because the county certainly couldn't afford that, nor could any other department. That money will be raised privately. And so that's, we have developed a Salmonberry Trail Foundation to do specifically that. We have several hundred volunteers that come out and help clean the trail, take down the blackberries. I mean, the trails, you can imagine, the rail wasn't used for probably 25 years. So there's been a lot of overgrowth. We have a lot of volunteers that are doing that for free. And any money that we raise will not be government money. It'll be all privately sponsored and funded programs that focus, quite frankly, on trail and activities that we get to use out in the forest and outside of our city.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you, Commissioner Willie, for making two trips out to the Grove today.
Well, you're very welcome. I'm very impressed with your 2040 Vision Group. That was a very popular program with the city of Hillsborough when I was mayor there and before that. So it it gives you certainly visionary opportunities. So I congratulate you on what you're doing here with your 2040 Vision Plan.
Great, thank you. Have a nice night. Okay, and we're going to move on to our second presentation of the evening, and that's our Forest Grove Forward 2040 Update with our Communication and Programs Manager, Ms. Stephanie Fletcher.
Oh.
Hello, hello.
Presentation had come up. Do I get a timer, too? Yeah, I kind of wanted to beat it. Anyway, this won't take very long. But so, good evening. I, tonight, I'm going to be providing your first official 2040 Vision Project update. So we're currently in the survey phase and wanted to share a quick update to this slide. As of August 23rd, we've actually received 832 responses. So the number keeps going up, which is great. We've held two steering committee meetings. Our next one is scheduled for October 7th. And I just want to remind everybody that the survey is open to anyone who lives, works, visits, or studies in Forest Grove. And the more responses we get, the better the final 2040 Action Plan will represent our community. So. If you haven't taken it, please do. And the survey closes September 30th. Our outreach efforts are in full swing, and we've been busy. In addition to our standard outreach, we've been visiting businesses, attending the farmer's market, distributing flyers and goodies at various events. Upcoming events include the Corn Rose and the Chalk Art Festival, will be the annual town hall meeting, and Oktoberfest. I also wanted to mention, too, that tomorrow we will be at a Chill with the Chief and Joseph, I think it's Joseph, yeah. So and before I continue, I would like to extend my sincere thanks to the mayor. She's been at a couple of our events, helping us pass out flyers, goodies, the city council, the chamber, and of course, city staff, members of the steering committee, for their dedicated outreach efforts and support of the Vision 2040 Project. As this is a community-driven initiative, the continued involvement is, it really is crucial. We cannot do this ourselves. And that leads me to the City Council 2040 Care Kit that I left on each of your spaces. The kit includes flyers, bookmarks, the square business card, and intercept surveys. And if you ever need more of that stuff, please let me know. So when you're out engaging with constituents or participating in community events, please take these materials with you and distribute them as appropriate. And again, like your efforts promoting this project are greatly appreciated. And then this is my last one. These, these are the 2040 Next Steps. We do have a city council work session scheduled in November, and I'm looking forward to reviewing the survey data. We kind of got a little preview at our last steering committee, but again, since we're still right in the middle of the survey process. Like it'll be, I think it'll be very interesting work. So I just want to, again, thank you all for your continued in promoting this.
Yeah, I have a, I have a statement or a question. Do you think you could? So I know you had emailed me. There's some events that this, like, there's going to be a booth for the 2040 survey. So there's events at the Chalk Art, the Corn Rose, Oktoberfest, First Wednesday, the Town Hall. And then Sasha wrote me an email about hooking up with the school districts and maybe going into back school nights or going into classrooms and trying to. So I guess what I'm asking is, if you could send an email out, is this like, would this violate public meeting laws? If if the comms team could send in a list out of things they're doing to get this engagement piece out, and then each of us could commit to helping with one of those things?
Like a list of.
Like opportunities.
Future engagement.
Yeah, like engagements, because then, you know, like, then we can kind of divide up. And, you know, I think it'd be really cool, too, if like, in our different sectors of our life, we promote this. But like, with these community, that the community sees the council, they're trying to say, hey, we want to hear from you and do those things. Is that, can we do that?
No, it wouldn't. I would just encourage the council to not reply. I'll just reply to Stephanie directly with what you may or may not be able to assist with. And no, that doesn't violate public meetings.
And then when you, and then you can just maybe do a count, yeah, perfect. Does that work? Does that work for the council? Would that be helpful? Or is there any wish to? Okay, well, yeah, I think that for me, the survey, 17, around 1,700 people did, completed the livability survey last year, right?
I think it was closer to 12.
Oh, I kept thinking it was 17.
It was like, it was like 1,100 and some change.
Yeah, I just, I just think that really, you know, we have 28,000 people that live here. So we need to figure out. And then I do want to address something, too, because I had spoken, you know, I think to there's, you know, as we're going through this process, we've identified that we need to make sure in our steering committees and like the people we're outreaching to, that we're like, have those demograph, those groups of people that are underrepresented sometimes in their voice. And so I think we're going to try to, you know, address that. So if you know someone that has good relationships with a large group of people, even if, you know, have, ask them nicely to push this out as well. Because that's really important, I think. Okay, well, any questions for Stephanie? Thank you so much for all of your work on this and Joyce's work. Tell Joyce thanks as well. Okay, so now we are going to move on to item F, which is public hearing. I will now open the public hearing on ordinance number 2024-05. If approved by the city council, this ordinance will amend the city municipal code to adopt limitations of liability for certain claims arising from the use of trails or structures when public easement and unimproved right of way under ORS 105.668. So questions, are there comments or evidence that staff would like to enter into the record? So I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Ashley Driscoll.
Hi, good afternoon, city council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So my name is Ashley Driscoll. I'm with the city attorney's office, and I am here to talk to you about the immunity ordinance that you just referenced. So already 25, oh, or 2405. I'm going to start by giving some background for those who are not familiar regarding recreational immunity and the toward history that it has had in the state of Oregon. So Oregon has recreational immunity, which are statutory protections for property owners, both public and private, who open up their property free of charge for recreational purposes for the public. The legislature encourages both private and public property owners to do so by providing a protection against them regarding certain types of lawsuits for negligence. This encourages and makes it feasible for entities such as the city of Forest Grove to have so many lovely parks and other public spaces to be able to to use. However, over the years, there's been different Supreme Court or court cases in Oregon that have, you know, provided some setbacks for the use of recreational immunity in Oregon. And we had that happen again in 2023. We had a case out of the city of Newport, which made it more difficult for property owners using recreational immunity to succeed in lawsuits that are filed under the statute. Because this is such a big issue in Oregon, the Oregon Legislature immediately took up the issue in the short session in 2024 and essentially put in a Band-Aid, a short-term fix for legislative, a short-term fix for recreational immunity generally, that's going to be in place for the next couple of years. It's my expectation that you're going to see a revised recreational immunity statute come before the Oregon Legislature next session, and hopefully, we'll have some better news coming out of that. This most recent round with recreational immunity has led a lot of cities and other local governments to look for other statutory protections under the law. And the one that I have in front of you today is very similar to recreational immunity. And, you know, essentially, it's it's another tool for the city to have in our toolbox to be able to have spaces that are open to the public. So under this statute, which is ORS. So under this statute, which is O R O R S one oh five dot six six eight, uh this provides an additional tool. It limits liability for cities um for personal injury or property damage that arise out of the public's use of trails, structures in the public easements, and unimproved right-of-way. So recreational immunity more generally is all public spaces, all spaces open to the public that are free or charged. This is just looking at um certain trails and unimproved right-of-way. However, does provide a pretty broad protection, both uh both to the city in this case and also to private property owners that have um properties that abut the city's property and also nonprofit groups that assist the city in maintaining and building those trail systems. Similar to recreational immunity, what this does is it provides a um a shield against certain types of lawsuits and liabilities that the city has for opening up these spaces to the public. It doesn't provide an absolute shield or absolute immunity, but it certainly is a step in the right direction. So under this statute, for cities that have population over five hundred thousand, it is automatically applied, just like more traditional recreational immunity. However, for cities like Forest Grove that have populations under five hundred thousand, you have to affirmatively opt in to this protection by ordinance or resolution. And so what I have for you tonight is just that. It's an ordinance adopting the protections under O R S one oh five six eight eight into the city's municipal code under chapter ninety-two point three three. Um and again, how I look at it is another tool in the toolbox to make sure that the city of Forest Grove can, can continue to offer so many spaces to the public. So with that, um I can take any questions if the council has them.
Thank you. Questions, council president Rippey.
Uh thank you, thank you, Ashley. Appreciate the, the uh, the background on this. I have one specific question, and that is uh both the staff explanation and the ordinance specifically mentioned that uh of for non-motorized activities. And my concern is that on trails throughout the city, we see electric bikes and on occasion motorcycles. And I'm based upon what I'm, how I understand this, is that the city is not protected but when there are accidents or issues with those motorized conveyances. Is that correct?
So not under this statute. So again, where general recreational immunity does exist, um the legislator came in and put a Band-Aid on that. And this is just a more specific statute that does exclude um motorized use.
There, so there is another statute that does it?
There could be. So it's this specific, sorry, interrupt.
All right, so, so then we're not, under this ordinance, we're still not protected for motorized bikes?
This one is specific to non-motorized, but other statutory protections could apply. Again, this is an additional tool in the toolbox that we already have.
So I guess the question that I would have is, should some sort of motorized vehicle, person have an accident on a trail? How is the city protected currently?
So more general recreational immunity could apply. So if they're using it for recreational purposes, recreational immunity could apply. Also, you know, discretionary immunity often applies to these sort of cases. And then a general defense of the lawsuit, you know, did anybody actually act in a negligent way? So I hope that answers your question without the exact facts. It's, it's difficult, but there are several other protections that the city has.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. I will now call on persons who have signed up to comment on the ordinance. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents who would like to speak? Any in the, nope, no one's watching on Zoom. Any opponents? Anybody who would like to give other comments? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Are there any additional questions or further discussion from the council on the motion? Oh, we now have a motion. Um are there any additional questions or discussion? Should there be a motion and then discussion? Is the script just off? It's a, so let's do a motion. Is there a motion on ordinance two zero two four dash zero five?
I move that we accept two zero two four dash zero five.
Second.
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five was moved by Councilor Martinez and seconded by Councilor Marshall. Are there any further discussions from council on the motion before we proceed with the vote? Counselor, council president Rippey.
Uh thank you. Um this issue is important enough, I believe, uh not only to the entire state, but to, to Forest Grove, given our interest in use of trails. Uh and I would uh, Ashley alluded to the fact that the legislature may consider this uh in the next session. So I would uh offer up or suggest to the, my colleagues that uh the, the whole council send a letter to our state representative and state senator uh requesting that they follow through with uh legislation that closes the gap on this. I think it's important that, that it's not just individuals on council, but if, if the whole council would consider doing that, uh then I would recommend that s- staff draft or? Would staff draft it or would somebody on council have to draft? Is that a political thing that staff can do or not?
I would defer to Ashley, but I think staff can draft the council's position on legislation.
Okay, well, anyway, that's what I'm, I'm suggesting, um that, that we would have to decide to do that under separate action. That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or discussion?
I do. I have. So eh, the last few years, all the parks and eh recreation facilities, eh trails, are really looking into eh building it in a way that will be easy for someone, for example, in a scooter or a wheelchair, to be able to enjoy, you know, some, some of the trail eh as well. What about them? Eh when it comes to the motorized vehicle usage? What about the people who have mobility issues and are on a trail with some kind of eh?
So the, so the motorized mobility, uh, oh yeah, carts? That, that would be, that would also not be, that's a good point. That would also not be covered under this.
Exactly, exactly.
But to what Ashley is saying, there's other ordinances that might, but, but it's not specifically covered under this.
Gee, go ahead, Ashley.
Yeah, just to a small point of clarification. So this statute protects the city against lawsuits. So if a user, you know, if you had somebody use one of your trails, they were injured, and then they sued the city, this would be part of our defense of that claim. And so I just want to be clear that, you know, this statute doesn't protect users. It protects the city to be able to open the property up for use. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I understand that. Um. It's, it's just the concern that I have eh, but I understand very clearly the, the content of this ordinance. Thank you.
Will the city manager read the ordinance by title only?
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five, amending the city of Forest Grove's municipal code to adopt limitation of liability for certain claims arising from the use of trails or structures within public easements, non-improved rights-of-way under Oregon Revised Statute one oh five point six six eight.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call for the vote?
Counselor Gusserson?
Yes.
Council president Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. With a vote of six to zero, ordinance two zero two four dash zero five is advanced to a second reading. We are now moving on to resolution two zero two four dash thirty-six. Um authorizing an I G A between the city of Forest Grove and Grove Link or Ride Connection. And I'm going to turn it over to Jesse.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. This is a intergovernmental agreement that would uh establish the terms and conditions by which the city would maintain the shelters. Uh we already have existing shelters within the city for Grove Link. Um these shelters, Washington County is proposing to replace. But Washington County would pay for all of the capital assets associated with that. They received a grant for it. Um currently, the city is um, the city installed the existing shelters. The city is maintaining those existing shelters. There's not necessarily a schedule for it. It's on an interim basis, uh and there's an interest by the county. And I think the city to uh more clarify the rules and responsibilities about what that maintenance looks like and specifically who maintains what. Under this agreement, the county would maintain the signs, uh and the city would maintain the shelters. Um and with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that the council may have. This, one last thing, this agreement will last for ten years. The estimated life of the shelters, uh the existing shelters that you see right now were installed in two thousand and fourteen. So their useful life is almost done.
Thank you. Questions for Jesse? Any questions? Is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six.
I second.
Thank you. Resolution two zero two four dash three six is moved by Counselor Gusserson and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Any discussion from the council? Seeing none, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only, please?
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between Washington County and the city of Forest Grove regarding maintenance of capital assets located in Forest Grove in support of Ride Connection and Grove Link.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the vote?
Counselor Gusserson?
Yes.
Council president Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution two zero two four dash three six has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council with a vote of six to zero. We are now moving to item G on the agenda, council communication. And we will start by council president, or with council president Rippey.
Thank you. Um the TV Highway Steering Committee uh did meet in early July. I missed the meeting because I was sick with COVID. Uh but they decided at that meeting to pursue, uh I think the term was a C I S funding scheme, which is basically includes federal funding, rather than just state and local funding. So the idea is then to look for federal funds to help uh pay for uh some of the projects that have, have been identified along the TV highway corridor. I did attend the Green Heron Book Arts Brand Opening on August seventh. And also the, on August ninth, was the mobilization ceremony for the two, second of the two eighteenth Field Artillery Oregon National Guard Unit. Uh and they are uh on their way to the Middle East for a full year. Uh they're currently down at Fort Sill, Oklahoma, uh for training. And then they'll be deploying overseas to Syria, somewhere over there. Uh there was no E D C meeting in August, and uh the chamber is uh had Commissioner Willie for their luncheon today, and they are focused on several upcoming events. The Corn Roast and their pickleball tournament are their two most significant events coming up. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, council president. Uh Counselor Gusserson?
Okay, I also attended the um deployment ceremony. Um there was a Guardians of the Grove celebration on August sixteenth. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard that it went very well. And if you haven't seen that statue yet, it's lovely. It's over by the flag, the flagpole. Um and then there is another one. I am looking at my calendar. It is on September eleventh. There's actually two ceremonies. One is the nine eleven ceremony that is also at the flag, at the flagpole at nine A M on September eleventh. And then that afternoon is the Seven Generations um artwork celebration. And that's over by the library, and it is also beautiful. Um so four o'clock on September eleventh for the Seven Generations celebration. Um during the Public Arts Commission meeting, we've been talking a lot about murals and um options of, of where murals can go and pricing them out. Um one thing came up during that conversation about murals at parks. Over in, in Bard Park, there is that workout, um the little outdoor gym that they've installed at Bard Park. And the committee was asking about bathrooms at that park location. And the conversation turned into what criteria must we, would, must we have in order to justify um bathrooms at a park? Because right now, we have this park, and now it has a exercise feature, and there's no bathrooms. There's no porta-potties in the summer when it's more frequently used. What's the process of, of looking into adding a bathroom, even just porta-potties in the summer months? So that was the question. I don't know, Jesse, if you have the answer to that.
I can take it back and talk with Ann and, and then get back to the council, so.
Okay. That is all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Marshall?
Uh Parks and Rec met on Wednesday last week. Um we had a gentleman, Miguel, come in from place, going over the uh East Side Park, going over the schematics for it. Um kind of went over the design process, and they will be bringing it back on September ninth to us at council. Um like the Recreation Division coordinated volunteers from the library um set up to weed the planter beds at Sites Park in preparation for delivery of the park dust. Uh they, they have, still haven't fixed the merry-go-round. They're um working with a, everybody who's put in the time with it to try to get it fixed. At this point, um the manufacturer is stating that we need to pay for it to be fixed, pay for the part, and install it ourselves. They're not taking any responsibility for it at this point, is what my understanding was. Um but on the other side, they went through the wooden structures and put sealant on it at um in Abby's yard, uh sealant on the wooden there, so it doesn't deteriorate as much. Um as far as the aquatic side of it, there's a new diving board that's been put in. Um and the aquatics maintenance will be closed, or the pool will be closed on September second through the eighth this year, and back up with normal programming on Monday the ninth. And as far as Forest Grove have not a, had a meeting, and Kelsa Creek Regional Trail, they haven't, still haven't set up a meeting yet with that.
Okay, great, thank you. Counselor Martinez?
So I attended the Forest Grove Rural Fire Protection District meeting. Um they have five very good potential um employees that they've interviewed, um two medics and three E M Ts. And then um the peak activity unit is running now from twelve noon to ten P M. Also, we had, did have um a couple of units or so deployed to the forest fires. So that's going well there. Um Sister City Committee, um it's, they're doing a great job. Um things are coming along. They have alternative events planned if they can't, we can't do what we've been originally planning. So um and then I, I'm going to say the, the dinner for the delegation when um the students and the adults come in in November, October, November. Um they're going to do a Thanksgiving-style meal, which sounded really great because that's- because that's very American for um, for those from Japan. Um, so really, a lot of exciting things going on with the Sister City Committee. Um, I also attended the Chill with the Chief at Bard Park, which was pretty cold. It was chilly that day, in spite of just the otter pops. Um, it was windy and and had rained, if I remember right. It was a colder day. And then also um, attended the celebration for the Heron metal sculpture that's near the flag. It's amazing. You need to go see that if you haven't done so yet.
Great, thank you. Counselor Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor. So eh, eh, Dawn already mentioned this, but it's an invitation from the library for September 11th at 4:00 PM. It's going to be the celebration of Seven Generations eh, the art eh, the art piece. And um, the CDBG had their 50th year anniversary last week on Thursday, and I had my all-staff meeting at Centro Cultural, so I was unable to to be part of that, and I had really been looking forward to it, but it didn't happen. And the library meets again on Thursday of this week.
Okay, Jessie, you're up.
Just a couple of things. Um, recently, the Oregon Supreme Court, they denied the petition to review the Court of Appeals decision on the climate-friendly and equitable communities. So that is effectively, from a legal perspective, the end of the road for legal challenges on on CFEC. So the work session that we had with regard to uh, the city ordinance, um, uh, that will be moving forward uh, because the legisla, excuse me, the the litigation is effectively over. Um, and then the only other thing is the city's Home Rule Charter measure has been filed with Washington County Elections Office. It's been assigned the measure number 34 dash 339. You can view that either through our website that connects to the county's website or go directly to the county's website if you want to view the measure itself. With that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so uh, before I kind of update you guys about the last month, um, I wanted to recognize Mr. Tom Cook, who was a his resignation letter was in our consent agenda. It was item 1C. Um, Mr. Cook is resigning from CCE, and I just want to thank him for his service. Uh, I think like eight years ago, he had the idea of doing like an emergency preparation ATM. And in my 10 years of being on council, I think it was the most successful ATM we had, and just a lot of good ideas. And he he volunteers for our community, um, and just is a good a good guy. So I just want to say thank you for your service. Um, in July, the DLCD Director and Community Development and myself met about housing needs in Forest Grove. Um, some good news is that the Washington County Courtney Committee agreed to use matching, to pay the matching funds that are required for our Public Works Safe Routes to School project on Mountain View. Um, Mountain View's on the east side of Forest Grove by Neil Armstrong, and that's a huge project because there's railroad that's there. So it was really nice for the Washington County to pay that matching fund. Um, and then we have a grant. I've spent, I've been very fortunate to have three different interactions in the last month with Dr. Suzanne West, who's the new superintendent for the Forest Grove School District. We had an initial meeting, looking at ways to collaborate, and um, you know, one of the things we're thinking of doing is just really like communication collaborations. Like when they communicate and offering services, when we need to get that engagement out. Um, she helped me. We co-facilitated Senator Ron Wyden's town hall meeting. And then I attended, her and Senator Solomon had a co-education town hall meeting last week, and I attended. I also attended Representative McLean's Town Hall a few weeks ago. Um, CWS, the I and I Project in Forest Grove, the ribbon cutting was on C Street, uh, I think earlier in July. And that was a huge federally funded program, I think $870,000 of federal funding. Um, but that helped to enter the the below-surface infrastructure that, and mostly for Forest Grove. So that was a great project. Um, I'm on the Region 1 Transportation Committee. It's a R1 Act, and I got to, I was asked to be a representative for rural small towns and explain to ODOT what our issues are, and so I really talked about TV Highway, East Side Forest Grove, those safety issues, funding. And then um, our Public Works Director, Greg Robertson, had a really, he's like, you know, what would help us is to have an ombudsman, some sort of liaison or advocate in ODOT that can help smaller cities navigate funding and those things, and so I was able to communicate with that. A very exciting Ride Connection, Grove Link is now extending services out to Cornelius, and it's Cornelius Link. And so this is huge for lots of different reasons. Um, on a large level, you can get to the max, like you can get, you know, from using Grove Link to Bus 57 to Hatfield. Um, so if you need to go to the airport or someplace further, or you're looking how to get into town. Um, I think for for me, or someone like me who stays in Forest Grove and Cornelius, I think for students, I think for people who don't want to drive, it really connects, you know, now you can get to the movie theater, you can get to Fred Meyers, you can get to the Forest Grove Library, you can get to Slow Rise. I think it's really, I highlighted it during my, uh, I gave a convocation speech at Pacific last Friday, and it was one of the things I highlighted about what's, why is it good to live in a small town? Um, a few of us attended the Employee Appreciation Barbecue. We have the best staff in Forest Grove, uh, hands down, and it's always nice to be able to celebrate and just like informally talk to one another and enjoy each other. Uh, I attended the Guardians of the Grove Arts and Installation or Ribbon Cutting by, in the Rotary Garden. Um, and again, that's a partnership between the city and Rotary. And then we use our commission. I mean, they handled $100,000 worth of RFPs. They wrote the RFPs. They did all the work, and that was a complete free service because we have good boards and commissions. Um, yeah, I attended some, like I attended the August 9th mobilization ceremony, some other things. But I think those are the main things I want to report out. Okay, so with that, I adjourn this meeting. Okay, but you have to stay.